All right, it is 5:30. Welcome to Luciemr Unified School District Board of Education Regular Meeting Tuesday, January 30th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May the roll call reflect that everyone's here except for Dee Santos and Andrea Benye. Mr. Stewart will be leaving some time in the meeting, and please have a minute. Don't get what he does mean. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Move adoption of the agenda for the regular meeting Tuesday, January 30th, 2024.
Certainly. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Naomi Benye. Mayor? Yes. Palm? Yes. Santos?
Ashton.
Ashton. Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes. Oh! I'm sorry. Aye. We're getting there. I'm a little west. It's only been a decade since I've been president. I'm a little west, though. The adoption of agenda has passed. Five to nothing. We have minutes tonight to approve on our agenda for December 12th, 2023, and the special meeting from January 16th, 2023. Does anyone have any questions or amendments to those minutes? The December 12th meeting was the very long meeting with all the annual meeting of the board. Anyone? Okay, and I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes. I hope we approve the December 12th meeting minutes and the January 16th meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mayor, seconded by Mr. Stewart to approve the minutes of December 12th and January 16th. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor? Yes. Palm? Yes. Candela?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passed. Now is the time for closed session. Have you comment on closed session agenda items? I don't see anyone in our audience to make comments, so I'm going to close the meeting and close the door to the public in the just closed session where we will deal with conference of legal counsel and dispute of litigation, conference of labor negotiators, and student discipline. We're going to adjourn to closed session.
Thank you and welcome tonight. Happy 2024. The board has been in closed section since 5:30 and are now reconvening at 7:00 PM for our public meeting. Let the record reflect that trustee Naomi Benye joined us at 5:40. Thank you. I have no announcements out of closed session for tonight, but I do have Oliver Smythe here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, Dr. Fawcett, can you introduce him for us?
You bet. I'd like to invite Oliver up to the mic. Oliver, please come on up. And then I want to read this special little statement about you that your principal shared with me. So Oliver Smythe is a third grade at Grover Heights. He's a fantastic classmate and is always looking for ways to contribute and help. Outside of school, Oliver enjoys building with Legos, going dancing, and playing video games. His favorite thing about Grover Heights is the Fun Run, and he loves to learn math, science, and art. We are proud to have Oliver represent the Grover Heights Dragons tonight. Let's give a big warm welcome.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, Oliver. And I really appreciate your nice dressed-up colored shirt here tonight. Thank you for representing your school so well. Congratulations. Okay, before we start, the items of interest from the board, I have some introductory comments that are going to be read at every single board meeting. A couple of announcements before we get started with the official meeting of the Board of Education, where the public is invited to observe and provide comments. First off, there are speaker cards in the back, yellow and blue, to fill out if you'd like to speak out for public comment. The yellow is for a specific agenda item, the blue is for the public comments for items not on the agenda. We do have an interpreter in here tonight. Also, could you raise your hand for everyone? If you need any assistance, she is more than happy to help you. On the last pages of our printed agenda, our decorum standards are stated, and thank you very much to our security team that are with us tonight. Thank you. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the Board of Trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the school board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes or no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter under the discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of the individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, and our staff. Luciemr is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and at our schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, and sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible in accordance with recently enacted law. Excessive disruption by any individual or any group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from this meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and stability of Luciemr. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, we're going to move on under communications, item of interest from the board. Any trustee like to comment? Nothing from Ms. Mayor, that's unusual. Ms. Pham?
Good.
Anyone? Well, it's been a quiet start to 2024.
I do. I do.
Okay. Ms. Benye?
Thank you so much. I wanted to share with everyone. My son, my son, um, loved us with Rojo Grande High School. Contacted stage three cancer, 25 years old. He underwent surgery not too long ago. He's doing good because of the large mass that was removed from the hip and groin area. Will now undergo heavily heavy radiation. One of the things to note is he is also special. So he is unaware of what is happening to him. He just knows that he's getting a lot of attention and he's happy. And so that's a good thing. And that happened December 8th at Front Regan UCL. As to myself, you probably have seen that I have lost quite a bit of weight. I've lost 57 pounds. I did have abdominal surgery. I'm doing well. I hit the mark where it was pretty bad, you know? I do have to go back in, but going back in, they're just going to install a catheter so that I can function regularly. Unless that will not affect my work here with you, and I'm still an advocate on behalf of our teachers and our students, and I look forward to continuing that.
Thank you. We wish your family's quick healing.
I didn't finish. I did also lose a sister about two weeks ago, 57 years old. Not married, an advocate for mental health, ran a hospital. And please, when you are sick with RSV, have respiratory issues, please take that in consideration. Really, really, it's She didn't. She did at first, but then she didn't. So we found her dead at home.
Well, I keep the sympathies to you and your family, and like I said earlier, I hope you can heal from that loss and also get your strength back with your health. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to under communications superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, President Martin. I have a couple of quick announcements, and then I'd like to invite someone up to the mic to share a presentation. So first and foremost, I had the opportunity and pleasure today to go to Rojo Grande High School, where we sent off Phil Reed, who is going to be competing for the Olympic Trials this Saturday in Florida. It's really exciting. The staff was excited to celebrate him, and he was thrilled to see everybody. It was a surprise. And then on Friday of last week, we had our first annual Luciemr Unified School District Annual Career and Technical Education Conference with a ton of business partners and a ton of alumni there to teach kids about college and career life skills. Kristen Anderson did a phenomenal job helping to organize the event. Over 400 students from all of our high schools attended, and it was just a blast. They enjoyed it, they learned a ton, and it was a great event that we look forward to seeing again next year. And then this weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Rotary Crab Feast, and there we had our Rojo Grande High School robotics team there, serving all the people that were there, enjoying the crab feast, and they did a terrific job. They were professional, they were on top of it, and they made everybody feel like they were top-notch guests, and so they did a great job there as well, too. And with that, I would like to invite up one of our very wonderful career technicians, Tricia Oxner. Please come up to the mic. She has a presentation. She's great. Let's give her a round of applause. She has a presentation about a scholarship and some of the programs that she offers. Without her, our students wouldn't get near as much funding for college. They wouldn't be accepted to as many colleges as they are. She really bends over backwards to make sure that they all get what they need in order to make it to post-secondary education with funding. So thank you for being here and thank you for being on our team.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. Welcome, board. Thank you for this opportunity to present. We're going to be talking a little bit about our career center technicians and how we connect students to success. So our role is to support the counseling teams at all the high school sites. Right now, we have a counselor-to-student ratio about 400-plus to one, so our role as the career tech, we can help alleviate the counselor load and help our kids with college and career readiness. So what do we do? We can provide career assessments, one-to-one conversations about future planning. I go into the classrooms, bring the classrooms into the career center, and talk to the kids about college and career. We help with college applications, the FAFSA and financial aid, and then liaison between the students and our college reps, our military, our scholarship donors, and our special programs, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight. But quickly, I wanted to introduce like our team. So that's me. The kids call me Mrs. O. I started in 2019 at Napomo High School and Central Coast New Tech High, and at the beginning of this semester, I moved to the big city and landed in the nest at AG High. Carrie Sanchez, she took my place at the career center there at Napomo and New Tech and is getting up to speed very quickly. Our CTE program hired Heidi Rowe, and she works with all of the CTE pathways at all the schools. And then a couple days a week, she is also the Lopez High Dedicated Career Tech. And then this year, we also hired Zandra Care, and she works with CTE and Questa dual enrollment. So it's a pretty powerful team. And I wanted to do just a quick plug about how we not just make ourselves available in the physical space, but during COVID, we had to make the kids able to access from home. So this virtual career center was born. You can see my little avatar, and our plan is to replicate that at other sites so that we can make everything easier for our students, their parents, anyone with college career readiness. So for the Malcolm Gladwell fans in the audience, I see us as connectors. We connect the students with college fly-in programs. I had a New Tech student who was with our match lighters program through college essay guys. She got free college counseling support with a private organization, upward bound, trade unions, military programs. And then Dr. Fawcett mentioned scholarship opportunities and Quest Bridge. So we're going to get into that in a minute. We connect the kids to the opportunities, they do the work. So what is Quest Bridge? Quest Bridge is a national scholarship organization. They offer full-ride scholarships to the highest achieving low-income students in the country. So there's about 20,800 applicants nationwide for Quest Bridge. We're talking the Ivies, Stanford, like the top schools. Of those 20,000, it's narrowed down to 6,600 finalists, and of those, 2,200 kids are matched and get the full-ride scholarship. And for the first time ever in Napomo High School's history, we have a Quest Bridge recipient. I'm going to introduce him in a little bit, but we are super proud of Eric Castellanos Castaneda. He is our Quest Bridge recipient. So a quick review of Eric's experience at Napomo. He started as a freshman, and we heard his name right away. He became a leader in Avid, started taking AP classes, varsity athlete, and last year, he was selected to represent Napomo High, a boys' and girls' state, which is a leadership program. And he spent the summer after that volunteering with Dignity Health. You have to ask him about his experience in the OR and in medical clinics, like it's crazy. And then at the beginning of this year, when we talk about programs, I nominated him for a fly-in program at Swarthmore College in Pennsylvania. He had to apply, it was extremely competitive, and he got it. So he flew to Swarthmore and spent several days learning about what's possible, and from there, I nominated him for Quest Bridge, and he was chosen as a recipient. So proof he was at Dignity, proof he was a boys' state. And then, you know, you've got to promote this exciting opportunity, so that was our social media. And just a quick, quick little ditty about Pomona College. It has an acceptance rate of 7%. It's one of the top undergraduate liberal arts programs, and through Quest Bridge, it's a full four-year scholarship to over $330,000. So I want to congratulate and invite up Eric just to shake his hand and introduce him. So anyway, if you just want to say a quick
Hi, my name's Eric. I'm sure you guys saw from the slides. I just want to say I did a lot of the work, but I couldn't have done it without Ms. O and Mr. Deichler, who's back there as well. I think the career tech, they help a lot. Every student, I mean, we hang on there every lunch, and Ms. O's been great with not only being a great counselor, but also being a great friend.
Well, I just want to say that Trish Oxner and I have the same position. I do it at San Luis Obispo High School, and I swear, she's like three of me. She does so much. And when I saw she was moving to AG, I was like, they're not going to know what hit them when they get Trish. She's just fabulous, and we're so lucky at Luciemr to have our college and career center specialists who work as hard as Trisha does. So thank you very much, and congratulations to you. All right, we're going to move on to the business of the school board. And Oliver, you don't have to say for all the business, if it kind of is above you a little bit. If you want to take your mom home and do your reading, that would be okay.
Oh!
Okay. All right, so the first item is the consent calendar action items. It's items 1 through 13. I know we have people that want to speak on that, but we actually make the motion in second for the whole group, and then I will identify you and call you up to speak. I'm not cutting you out, okay? So I'm looking for a motion for the consent calendar action items, 1 through 13. I make that motion to accept our consent calendar. Second. It's been moved by trustee Mayer, seconded by trustee Naomi Benye. And now I will take, any questions from the board on these items? Seeing none, I'm going to open it now to public comment. I do have yellow cards, so I'm going to read them off. I'm going to give you the whole list, who goes first, so you guys can be ready. Remember, you have only up to three minutes. Travis Plum, Katie Morris, Andrea Geis, Hillary Swetlin, and Sarah Snow. Okay? So Travis, you're first. Please come on up to the microphone. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Travis Plumlee. Representative here of the community. I represent Five Cities Youth Baseball. I'm a vice president there. I'm a peace officer in the state of California. I do investigations and staff misconduct. All that being said, there was an investigation that was done, some allegations were made about my wife, who was an employee here in this district. These allegations were unfounded. They were false, and she is being committed to be terminated because of those allegations. As we just saw with Ms. O and Eric here, there was an embrace of a student by a teacher, a hug that was given. That hug was welcomed here in this forum. However, it was turned against my wife in the form of her classroom, who was consoling a student who was having a hard day. That was misinterpreted by another teacher, member of the school district. These allegations were investigated, and we don't know the outcome of them other than there was a police report that was done, a child abuse form that was completed, which was unfounded, and we don't have the outcome of the allegations that Ms. Handy herself completed. I'm just here to let you guys know, if you guys hadn't read the letters that were written by members of this community, students, teachers, huge outpouring of support and love for this woman right here, who is a huge advocate for kids in this community, and for her to be put through this in the way that was done, but it's all false, and then just so easily be discarded by a school district, me as well. So I appreciate your time. Thank you. If you guys have any questions, my number's on the card.
Thank you very much. And I neglected to comment about our little speed light there. Green means go, obviously, and red means it's time to finish up. Next one is Katie Morris.
Thank you, everyone. Sarah had reached out when she was undergoing all of these issues, and, you know, we consoled each other, but I just wanted to share a character reference. Anyone, anytime someone asks you to write a character reference, you get to gloat on that person. Fortunately, it pains me to know that her character and professionalism is being challenged enough to warrant letters from colleagues and peers and friends on her behalf. I met Sarah through our son's sports activities. My youngest plays water polo and my oldest in baseball together, and I learned that she also moved here from the Central Valley, and, you know, we shared similar stories, and she was the one I looked forward to on the pool deck. We sat there together, watching the kids run around on the grass and froze our tushes off watching the kids play water polo at 7:00 at night. But she was also the person that I looked forward to actually being there, you know, like moms, as moms, we like to watch our kids, but we also like to share mom time. And I really looked forward to Sarah being there because she is the kindest of hearts, opens her heart to listen without judgment, and provide her input and opinion on certain things, and doesn't care if you follow it or not. She's just there to lend a ear. Sarah started setting at AG High School, and I was fortunate to have one of those classes with my oldest son during academic seminar. He has an IEP, and so this class is really important to him to make sure that he's getting the structure and support he needs to finish all of his classwork, and was struggling to do so. But she was able to, quote, "put him to work and get that done." He was really looking forward to seeing her every single day in those classes until she got her long-term sub role. And then he was pretty upset about that because he was really excited about those. Over the course of a year, families grew closer and taking the break, and Sarah and I created a friendship that doesn't require the daily chats and maintenance. We pick up right where we left off, and that's who she is. She listens without judgment and provides guidance to enable you to make our own choices and respects whatever those are. I respect her, trust her, and can't think of anything else to say that would exclaim my thoughts of what a wonderful human she is.
Thank you. And the next up is Andrea Geis.
Good evening. I'd just like to start, I get very nervous about public speaking, so I'm going to give it my best shot. And I keep looking at your cup over here, wondering what it's doing, but if you could let me know a little bit later, that would be great. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andrea Geis, and I'm just going to read my letter verbatim because it's just going to be easier for me. I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to review it already or not, but I'm going to go through it real quickly. My name's Andrea Geis, and I'm writing this letter to you today on behalf of our daughter and a former student, she graduated early, of Luciemr Unified School District, as well as Mrs. Plumlee. I'd like to begin that I met Travis Plumlee last summer during, where's my notes? Last summer, he attended a business luncheon with multiple colleagues after an industry caravan. I learned that Travis was new to the real estate community, and we all welcomed him with open arms. This was obviously a second income for him. Our children, Carson and Ava Perkins, they attended Lopez this, the school year of '21, '22, as well as '22, '23. They both graduated last year. During this time, they each had an opportunity to have Sarah as our substitute teacher who had been filling in long-term for a teacher who needed to care for an ill sibling. I'll just kind of move forward. In the first semester of 2022, Ava had Mrs. Plumlee for algebra. I feel Sarah genuinely cared for each student that stepped into our classroom. She treated them with respect and validated their positions. Kids at Lopez are there for a reason. Some credit deficient, some troubled, some that did not thrive in traditional school environments. Each student had a story, and Sarah had the ability to embrace their why and help them to succeed. That's an empathetic trait that not all people have. Students there were able to trust her and know that she cared for them and their emotional and educational well-being. During the fall of 2023, the Plumlee family and our family had grown to be very good friends. We would go to events together, visit each other's homes, and care for the animals. Ava and her friend Taylor would actually babysit their twin daughters, care for the animals when they were out of town. It was more than just a teacher relationship, it was a friend, a family-friend relationship, and we all consider Sarah to be a second mom to our family. Here's the incident and question. On December 13th, Ava came home extremely upset and in tears. She explained to me that she had been called into Principal Jennifer Bowen's office along with an HR rep, Jennifer Handy, as well as a school resource officer. She was interrogated and asked if Ava felt safe at school. There were a series of questions that took place, which made Ava extremely confused, offended, and outraged. All questions stem from accusation that involved Mrs. Plumlee and Ava that day. Ava was instructed to go to Mrs. Plumlee's class and get a permission note to be signed off on that would allow her to be in Mrs. Plumlee's class to do an extra credit assignment for her PE teacher. Ava explained that when she went into the classroom, she gave Mrs. Plumlee a hug when getting her notes signed. The situation was blown out of proportion. Who knows who saw what and who said what? But the situation had been blown out of proportion, in the manner, out of proportion, the manner in which it was handled by HR in Lopez was poorly handled, and the fact that I was not notified by the school or allowed to be present during such interrogation was extremely inappropriate. If you read onto the letter, it goes on in more detail, but I'm pretty much out of time. So I'll just close with this. I guess I can't. So I think that Sarah, my husband and I, we both think that Sarah and Travis are, I'll just, thank you, utmost care and I'll just, thank you, utmost care and respect for everyone. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, Hillary Swetlin or Swetlin Hillary, I'm not sure which one it is, so.
I think I wrote it backwards.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm a local, I have a child at Shell Beach and I have known Sarah and Travis for a couple of years. Our kids play sports here locally together as well. And I'm going to read a letter from a teacher. Says, "To whom it may concern, I became acquainted with Sarah Plumley in twenty-twenty-one as she was a substitute at Harlow Elementary, where I am a teacher. Sarah was a substitute teacher for my class multiple times in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year and again in the next school year. In addition, Sarah's son was a third grader in my class last year and this enabled me to get to know her and her family more intimately over the course of the school year. As a teacher and parent, Sarah has displayed many positive attributes that I feel are important for me to share. In the classroom, Sarah always followed through with the lesson plans that were provided for her and she carried them out consistently and thoroughly. She communicated well with me by leaving a note with a clear outline and comments regarding what was covered and specific notes about individual students' successes or need for additional support. Sarah has a wonderful rapport with students. She's an enthusiastic and positive teacher who takes the time to form a relationship with each student. Additionally, she got along well with staff and made a concerted effort to get to know other educators at our site. Sarah Plumley displayed professionalism in all of my interactions with her. As a parent, Sarah was actively involved in her child's education. She communicated weekly with me and partnered with me in advocating for the success of her son in school. She values education and displayed great respect for me and my expectations for her son in third grade. In this realm, Sarah prioritizes her family and does not hesitate to be an active participant in their lives. In addition to working diligently with me to ensure the progress of her child in third grade, Sarah was also very active in our community. In particular, she spent countless hours volunteering her time with Five Cities Youth Baseball, supporting youth in our area. She cares deeply about the success and well-being of all children and this is highlighted inside and outside the classroom." One of the letters from a teacher in support of Sarah. And I cannot say enough, I'm a medical professional in the local community and just my experience with their family and upstanding, just all of our interactions. Know what it is to walk through something hard and have to walk through these things. And the support of friends and family, I hope that you can see that we value Sarah and her part in this educational community that we're a part of as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last speaker card I have is for Sarah Plumley.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Sarah Plumley and I hope you had time to read my letter that I wrote to each of you and sent you all last night. I'm here to speak about my termination, a termination which is occurring because of a false allegation against me. I was informed as to the reason of my termination, other than I was uninformed of my termination, other than an at-will employee. If the investigation was completed, it would show no wrongdoing or misconduct on my part. I've never been disciplined or had a negative performance evaluation. On December thirteenth, my life as I knew it and career at Lopez and being a substitute teacher for our district came to abrupt end. That morning, I was getting my third period class started on their daily routine. I noticed that the vice principal was in my classroom wandering around and looking at the window. Suddenly, my computer shut off and Ms. Handy walked in to my classroom and in front of the whole class asked me to grab my purse and come with her, which I did. She proceeded to tell me that she had received an accusation about me, that a teacher had a student sitting on my lap and she was there to investigate. I was shocked and in utter disbelief, I would never have a student sit on my lap. I was interrogated by Mrs. Handy about this accusation. Mrs. Bowen and the SRO officer were present. The officer looked confused, like he couldn't believe what he was hearing as he and I spoke multiple times about the life of law enforcement, as my husband is law enforcement and my father was too. I'm still confused as why this nightmare happened to me when all efforts I put into being a great sub for the district. I stand here before you tonight, hoping that you have looked at enormous amount of outpour from me by my family, friends, our community, teachers, students from Luci Amar School District. This has crushed my nine-year-old son who attends Harlow and he just wants his mom to be a sub for his teacher in his class. My twins say I can't wait for you to be in my classroom like bubba. One of our goals is to make our community safe. One of my goals is to make our community safe and a better place by ensuring our students have the encouragement and positive impacts in their life to complete their education. I know this decision is in your hands and I will respect that decision made with grace. In closing, I would like to ask if the determination is to terminate me, to know why? Why am I being forced to close a chapter of my life that I love because I have one false accusation about me? Thank you for my ti, your time and I hope you will vote not to terminate me from the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on our consent calendar action items, items one through thirteen? Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the board. Does anyone on the board want to make comments on items one through thirteen? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, in regards to number five. And yes, Williams Uniform Complaint. I'd like to know, we had, we've had several students come before us to complain. Does this affect that report?
I'm going to let.
No, no, it does not.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
So the record will reflect that there has been no complaints regarding number five.
Right. A lot of it has to do with instructional materials, the Williams complaint, correct?
And what's, and my understanding is we have posted in every classroom.
Williams Complaint Notice.
Every classroom has that.
Yes.
Posted.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Okay.
All right, anything else for items one through thirteen? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I already have a motion by Mayor and a second by Amy Bernier. Could you please take the roll? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Amy Bernier.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Candell.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes items one through thirteen. Okay, we're going to move on to items, reports and presentations, resolutions and proclamations. Number fourteen, school-side presentation, Grover Heights Elementary School. Oh, and Oliver's walking out the door.
Thank you, my name's Kelly Logue, I'm the principal at Grover Heights Elementary School. And I have to say, when Dr. Fawcett first asked me to come present, I went in a lot of different directions. We have a gorgeous new NPR, I'll show that. We have construction going on, which is not gorgeous, but we know it will be. And we have an amazing PTA who's really invested and has really risen to the occasion this year. But I'm not, I could talk in detail about all those. But instead, I would like to focus on celebrating some of the successes that we have had, particularly in the last four years, which is when I started, and some of the hard work we've been doing as of late. We spent a little bit of time earlier this year revising or revisiting our mission and our vision statement to reflect some of the changes in the last couple of years, especially post-COVID, really focusing on a whole child striving to become their best self. And that is through the lens that we'll look at things today. So we'll go back four years again, that's when I said I started. If you remember anything about education, four years ago, we weren't really in school at this time. We were doing distance learning and we were all wondering what it would be like coming back. And we had no idea because nobody had ever done that before, but we knew it would be different and we knew we would, well, we expected that we would have a lot of challenges and different things to navigate. So when I came on, I spent a good amount of time talking with teachers about what do we need? What are, what do we want? What will help support our school? And there was a loud, clear message that teachers wanted consistent, clear processes and communication for a lot of things, one of them getting student, getting support for students and then also with behaviors, behavioral expectations. So that paired with the unknown, coming back from, from COVID and the different unique challenges presented in education, started our path toward PBIS, our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And that is where I would like to show off a little bit about what we've done at Grover Heights. I'm sure you've seen this triangle before in education, but this is the triangle that represents our tiered supports through PBIS. That green part is one hundred percent school-wide support. So all students access these supports and those are all school-wide. And I want to share with you a couple of samples of what those are. The yellow triangle is some students need a little more support. And please note that that yellow and the red triangle float on that all-school-wide support. So just because students need more supports, whether they're academic or socio-economic or behavior, or socio-emotional or behavioral supports, they still have access to our school-wide supports. And that's a really important component of PBIS. We have a couple of different teams responsible for overseeing these and we're really proud that our Tier One team, so overseeing our school-wide supports, is very well-rounded. We have a variety of classroom teachers at different grade levels. We have classified staff. We really get, are able that way to gather a lot of input and to put some different things in place, some unique programs in place. And then our Tier Two and Three team is a little more specific with regard to helping students with additional behavioral support. So that's a smaller team and those are not classroom teachers on that particular team. PBIS as a system has very specific criteria of who makes up a team and we have exceeded their criteria and we're really proud of our two different teams. So you have, I don't think you have this in front of you, but this is, I'm not an exhaustive list of our tiered supports, but these are some of the main ones. And I could talk at length about these and I would love to if you want to know more about any of these things. But I did select a few that I wanted to share with you from a couple of the different tiers. So the, one of the first things we did, and you do have this in front of you, it's our Behavioral Matrix. And this is a foundational piece to PBIS, it looks like this. Sorry, it looks like that. So you'll, you'll see at Dragon, at Grover Heights, we are Dragons and Re-Roar. And Roar stands for Responsible, On Task, Accepting and Respectful. And those are the traits we expect students to exhibit at Grover Heights. And we have clearly defined what those traits look like in all of our common areas. And this, like I said, is that foundational piece. We go back to this regularly, we teach this matrix, we reteach this matrix. We refer to it when we praise students, we are very specific, pulling language off of this matrix. But this is that core piece that started our journey as far as having that clear and, and consistent language as a launching piece for PBIS. That is one important piece. This, one of the second big things we undertook was refining what we call our care process. So you also have this, there's a lot on this handout. And I, I won't go through all of it, but essentially, this is the process that staff follows when they have a, an academic, a behavioral or a social, social, emotional concern about a child. And what this has allowed us to do is really expedite and streamline the services that students receive. Previously, it would take a while to have a team meeting and then it would take a while to get some services in place. So we have found that through this process, students are much more easily able to receive services at a faster rate. We are continuously revising this based on teacher and staff feedback and based on our own experiences as we've gone through this. And we are making adjustments along the way to make it even more streamlined. But this was a labor of love and we are really, really proud of the progress we've made toward making those interventions more successful. So this is the launching off point that enables students to receive those more intensive interventions, the Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. And then one more Tier One piece or support that I wanted to share with you is new to us this year. We were selected, one out of twenty-five schools nationwide, to participate in a study called the Little Spot Series and it is social, emotional curriculum geared toward younger students. So this is one of our classes and they were identifying and drawing their emotions based on the Little Spot Series, which you'll probably start seeing more and more of. The goal with this is that students learn strategies for identifying, communicating and coping with their various emotions. And our students and our teachers are finding it very successful and they are really, really engaged in the curriculum. So unfortunately, it doesn't expand to the upper grades, but for our younger grades, it's, it has been a great fit so far. And again, that's a Tier One support because it's available for all of our students in classroom, class-wide lessons. And then moving into the Tier Two supports, this is, these supports in Tier Two and Tier Three are a possible result of that care referral form. So these are supports that students would have access to. And one of those is called Check-In/Check-Out, or C-I-C-O is how we abbreviate it. You have two cards in front of you. And I am actually not going to explain very much about Check-In/Check-Out. I have a video with some students because I thought that would be much more interesting to hear from them. And you'll recognize one of them from tonight. Let's see, I didn't double-check with sound.
Sure, um, so first, you go, your teacher asks you to go, to go to Check-In/Check-Out. So you go to Ms. Neal's office. Then, then she normally asks you, um, like, how's, how's your day going? And then, and then, and then you get, and then you get your paper. And then, and then, and then you go back to your class. Then, then you let your teacher have it, have the paper, once you get back in class. Then throughout the day, you try your best to stay as roaring as possible. And then you could, and then you could either get a one, a one, which is like a lot of reminders, a two, which is like one or two reminders, and a three, which is like the best, no reminders at all. If you get all threes, then that's like a perfect score. Learn being kinder about other people and being more, being more accepting and roaring.
Like it helps me with my behavior, it helps me like pay attention more. Like I have to get to my goal by the end of the week. And sometimes I feel like I'm sad, but when my teacher comes, they ask me what's wrong and then they tell me it's okay. And then I got the Check-In/Check-Out because I've been having a rough time.
My advice would be probably, um, try to get the highest score that you could get. Doesn't have to be perfect, just try to get the highest score.
How cute. Yay, Oliver! I know, so Oliver, whoops. Oliver is graduating out of our Check-In/Check-Out. In fact, those students who are out there are all graduating out of it. They have made such progress. Specifically those students, but we have also seen significant decreases in referrals and disciplinary action with students who are on Check-In/Check-Out. And it's really, the goal is twofold, it is to establish and provide that connection for those students, that daily check-in. You heard Oliver say, Ms. Neal, who's in our audience also. Ms. Neal asked me, "How's your day going?" And, and it's also for them to set goals based on these cards and then they reflect upon those at the end of the day and they celebrate their successes. So it's a very positive way to help students make progress, especially with behaviors. Okay, and then the last intervention piece is also something brand new we are starting this year. Our school counselor has started a peer mediation program. So we have a group of fourth through sixth graders who gave up their lunch and their lunch recess for over six hours. She thinks they met about. She thinks they met about 10, 10 times to train on a peer mediation program. And students or teachers can request assistance. And a peer mediator will meet with them under the supervision of Ms. Lewis, our counselor, and help them in resolving their conflict. So this is something we are just getting started. They just got their shirts right after winter break, so they're very proudly wearing them and just starting with that process. It's something we're really excited about. We're really striving to teach our students how to resolve problems, how to work as a student body and becoming independent in that. So that's something really exciting that we have on the horizon. And I could go on and on and on about a lot of the really exciting, useful, helpful, productive things we have going on at Grover Heights. This is just a start, but I'm just really proud of the staff, of how we work together. We have open lines of communication. Everybody does their part in supporting students and I am just incredibly proud of them. We are seeing positive change and we are seeing results. And it's, it's exciting to look at and it's definitely a team effort. So thank you all for your support and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you and keep going.
Oh, sorry.
I do have a few questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you have questions?
Yes. Henry Evernian, trustee number three. How many ESL students do you have in your school?
Um, we have about twenty, between 25 and 30.
And how many teachers do you have that are bilingual that teach?
We don't have any fully bilingual teachers.
Okay, and then how many teachers do you have, how many students do you have in special education?
We have a resource program. We don't have a special day class. And I believe her caseload right now is at about 28 for a resource program. And I couldn't tell you about her speech teacher, I'm not sure what her numbers are right now.
And so you have just one teacher teaching 28 students?
Supporting resource students throughout the day, not all at once.
Not all at once.
Correct.
And so you also do have like help in regards to that?
There are, we have professionals as well.
Okay, and then, um, so STEM teachers, do you have?
We don't have designated STEM teachers. We have classroom teachers who teach STEM lessons, but we don't have like a pull-out STEM program.
So none of the teachers from out of schools come in to help you at all?
No. Not with STEM.
All righty, well, congratulations on your four years at Grover Heights.
Thank you.
We're happy and happy that your students are working so hard on the whole child, not just the reading and writing, but learning how to get along and learning how to be kind and collaborative. And it's really great to see that you have leadership like you and Oliver leading the school, so.
Thank you, it is a great place to be and we invite you all out anytime.
Yes, and good luck with the rest of your construction. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 15, which is Report Student Learning California School Dashboard, and that's for Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, President Martin. As Mr. Gimlin comes up to present our report, I will just share that the California School Dashboard is annually released. We're glad to know that after this final year, we're going to start to, Brett, it's just what was already up.
Was it?
Yeah, you just move forward. We're going to start seeing the dashboard come out earlier and earlier. So hopefully we'll be able to give you this report in December next year and then move it back in the years to come. And so we'll be going through the different elements of the dashboard and sharing that we're generally seeing some positive trends, which is great since we had the dashboard for the first time last year after the COVID craziness. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Gimlin.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here tonight to present the California School Dashboard.
Mr. Gimlin, I need you real close to that microphone, okay?
Okay, it wasn't green for me. Okay, if I move it up?
You can bend that upward.
Okay, so here tonight to present the California School Dashboard, it is from 2023 and we are in 2024. So you may be wondering, why didn't you bring this to me in 2023? Well, the California School Dashboard was actually released on December 15th. We had a board meeting on December 12th, so we missed it by three days or we would have presented it earlier to you. All the information that's included in the school dashboard, we have presented that information to our staff and use that to plan our year and all the things that we're doing based on this information. But it wasn't released by the state until December. And the state recognizes that this is too late as well. They passed a Senate bill, Senate Bill 114, passed in July. And it requires the CD to release the dashboard by October 15th. But you can't just do that all at once, so they're going to kind of take it back over the years moving forward to 2026. And in 2026, we look forward to being able to present this information to you much sooner. But here we are in 2024, presenting 2023 information. Going to jump right in. So as Ms. Dixon mentioned, the California School Dashboard is an annual report published by the state to help the public understand how individual schools, districts, and the state rates in 11 measures of school success, which I'll talk briefly about and then jump into them in a little bit more detail. So the 11 measures of state success, there are six state measures and there are five local measures. Those are basic conditions. Some of those are assessed through the Williams Audit. Implementation of academic standards, we have school climate surveys, parent involvement and family engagement, and then also access to courses. Those local measures are reported. And basically those just receive a met, a not met, or a not met two-plus years. And we consistently meet our local measures. The state measures are English Language Arts and Math, which we've already talked a little bit about CASP. I want to say back in October-ish. English Learner Progress, which is progress on the LPAC assessment. Chronic Absenteeism, which is a K through eight indicator. College and Career, which is obviously at the high school level. Graduation rate as well, and then suspension rate. So they receive different colors, real easy for the public to understand the different colors. Red, not so good, blue, really good. And then all throughout kind of the continuum of the colors. They break it down even further and this is the great thing about the California School Dashboard. When you compare it to past measures of school success, is that they include a growth indicator. So this is five-by-five grid and you can see the levels along the sides. So let me see if I can get this little laser pointer here because I may need it. Turn on laser pointer. So here, along the side, we have a level. We have very high, high, medium, low, and very low. And then we have a growth measure. So we have a maintained, a declined, declined significantly, and then decreased and increased significantly. So there's the five-by-five in the measures. So if you were scoring at the medium level, based on your percentage in one of the areas, you would be either a yellow or green. And depending on your progress from the prior year, you would kick one way or the other. So if you were in the medium level and you increased significantly, you could kick from the yellow to the green. And you'll see that in some of our indicators as I dive into them. Okay, so CASP. So CASP is English Language Arts and Mathematics. You may be thinking that, well, don't they do science as well? They do do science as well, but they don't report that on the California School Dashboard. So you won't see an indicator for science. So on there you will see, and this is exactly what it looks like on the California School Dashboard site. You'll see that level, so 0.5 points above standard. That's the average of all students in the district, how far away they are from that met standard line. And then the growth indicator, the increased 3.5 points here. And then there's what's called an equity report, which will tell you where all of your subgroups fall. So you have to click on this little arrow here and it'll expand it and drop down in the dashboard. So here we are for English Language Arts, again, 0.5 points above standard. And you can see the percentages, that lands us in the medium range, medium performance level. And because of the increase of 3.5 points, we kick from the yellow into the green. And so you can see the green indicator indicated right here. And again, you just click on this little button here if you're on the dashboard and then that takes us to the subgroups. Doesn't look like this, it's a little bit more complicated than that and how it shows it. But this basically gives you an idea of where our, our subgroups fall. Our English learners and SWD is Students With Disabilities. That falls in the red. Orange is foster, Hispanic, homeless. And SED stands for socio-economically disadvantaged. None in the yellow, and then green, Asian, Filipino, white. And then the blue is two or more races. And for a subgroup to be listed on the dashboard, it has to be 30 students or greater. Okay, jumping to math, I'll progress a little bit, get a little bit quicker as I go along here now that you've got kind of the layout of the dashboard. So 45.6 points below standard puts us into the low. And then we get a little bit of a kick from orange to yellow because we increased significantly by 4.8 points. And then here's where our subgroups fall in math. Again, our English learners and students with disabilities, or actually our English learners falling into, into the red. Foster and homeless in the orange, Filipino, Hispanic, and socio-economically disadvantaged. And the green, Asian, two or more races, and white. Okay, so the English Learner Progress, or the LP, English Learner Progress Indicator, basically measures how students do on the LPAC assessment, which we are starting to give here in a couple of weeks. We start in February and we test all the way up through May. And that's basically shows progress from one LPAC assessment to the next LPAC assessment. So we're 49.1% making progress and we had a decline of 5%. This shows you in the five-by-five grid. So you can see we're in the medium range here. And we were at the yellow and we dropped to the orange. So anytime we have a decline, unless it's in, obviously in suspension or chronic absenteeism, where a decline is actually a good thing, we're obviously concerned about that. But one thing to keep in mind about the LP, the English Learner Progress Indicator, is it's comparing progress from one year to the next. So if we look at 22 and 23, those were fairly regular school years. 2021 was not such a regular school year. If you remember in 2021, we did not give the CASP assessment because we got a letter from the state that basically said, you've got some flexibility, you don't have to give the CASP, you can give a local assessment. And we chose not to do that, but we started giving the LPAC in February. And we gave the LPAC to students through 2021. Some of them were in person, some of them were virtual. So when you look at progress from how students did on the LPAC in 2021 to 2022, it's an irregular year to a regular year. When you have 22 and 23, it's a regular to a regular. So looking at this decline, we look at it more as a normalization instead of kind of a regular year. So next year we'll get a better look at it because we'll have all regular years that are being compared. So I wanted to make sure and make that note for you. Okay, chronic absenteeism. So a student is considered chronically absent if they are absent for 10, 10% of the year or more. So 180 days, if a student is absent for 18 days or more, they are considered chronically absent. This has been a hot topic around the state because there are a lot of school districts and schools that their chronic absenteeism rate shot up during COVID times and hasn't come down like we had hoped, so. We're in the orange range with 22.6% of our students chronically absent. And this is a decline and a decline is a good thing. We want our absenteeism rate to go down. But that 22.6% puts us in the very high range in the performance level. And we kick from the red to the orange because we had that decline, it's a significant decline. So we're, we're definitely pleased with that. A lot of work to be done here in this area. But you'll see that there are a lot of school districts across the state and definitely in our area that are in a similar boat with chronic absenteeism. Which I'll show you a comparison here at the end of the presentation. Our subgroups, you can see a lot of them fall into the orange. And I won't read all of these to you every single time for brevity. The next indicator is college and career readiness, which is obviously a high school indicator. This is status report only, so you're not going to see the pretty colors on this. It's going to show these little cellphone bars. But we can take these cellphone bars and like equate them in our mind to the different colors. So here we are with the cellphone bar. The next one, we're in the medium range with 49.1% of our students prepared. And then the college and career readiness, a lot of things add into that percentage. It's basically students that are, a percentage of students that take AP exams, the A-through-G requirements, complete a CTE pathway, or enrolled in a dual enrollment course. And 49.1% of our students are considered prepared. Graduation rate, these are our high schools. Our graduation rate was 92.9% last year. That was a decline of 1.6%. Still at the high level though, so our performance level, we're still a high graduation rate district. But we went from a green to a yellow because we had that, that one decline. So that's obviously a concern for us, but still at the high level, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Graduation rate, is that the first day of ninth grade to the last day of 12th grade? Or the first day of 12th grade to the last day of 12th grade?
It's ninth through 12th, so they're, they're here all throughout. And at this, this current state right now, before the dashboard starts to kick back towards October, it actually includes those fifth-year graduates. But as they move back the reporting guidelines, it'll, it'll be tougher to make the guideline for reporting for students that take those summer school classes, so. Good question.
And, and, excuse me, and when we identify that a student needs that help, I mean, how soon do we implement that?
I can take that question, Mr. Gimlin. As soon as a student is coming off track for graduation, meaning that they have failed a class, then we start to implement credit recovery immediately. So if it happens in the ninth grade year, then one typical way students will access credit recovery is through our summer school program. That's sort of the most classic way to do it, but we do have during the school year options. So we try to get students back on track immediately. Our guidance counselors are amazing with this. And if students stay off track, then it's, they proceed through high school. There's other options open up, including potentially going to Lopez to recruit accrue credit more quickly to get them back on track for graduation.
And so the second question is, are parents eager to be on board with this with their students or what's the success rate on that?
The success rate in summer school is very high. It are during the school year options, I would say it, as if the student is committed and it's, it helps the student to be committed if the parents are on board and they usually are, then we see some good success there too. We don't catch every single one of them, but it is a whole school effort when a student falls off track to get them back on, back on track for graduation. And hopefully, college and career readiness and that other rating that we saw as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. So this is where our students for graduation fall, our students with disability. And you'll notice there aren't as many subgroups here. And that's because of that 30 or more, so a much smaller group in a graduating class than if you're looking across the district. Yes.
So would you say the Adults in Transition Program here is the something that we have that will that, that's something that our students need? I mean, is there any, any type of program that we should implement in the Adults in Transition so that we can have a little bit more success rate, I guess?
Students who participate in the Adult Transition Program are typically not included in the graduation rate because they are typically doing a certificate of completion. So in this particular metric, those students are not represented here, it's, it's high school graduation. ATP specifically, however, is a wonderful program that supports adult learners when they get there. So we're constantly looking at ways to improve. And for our students with disabilities or our students who have IEPs, many of many of whom stay on track for regular graduation, there are a lot of services in place for them as well.
I know, I have noticed that. One of the concerns that I do have is when it's raining, a lot of our students are indoors. They cannot access out. And so I'm wanting to make sure that we have good programs, additional programs, because looking out in other programs and other schools, they do, they do. And our adults and transition program is very limited. It used to be a preschool. I don't know if you're well aware of that. It used to be a preschool, now turned into a school, which is only really a classroom. So my question is, will we in the future have a school for our students with adults and transition program?
Just even, yeah, let's get back to where we're.
I think it's very important because we're we're trying to, he's sharing with us where we are, the, and I think we can do better if we had more.
Right. Right now, we're going over the dashboard and the graduation rate. And so you well know that many of our kids with IEPs who are in the ATP program got a certificate of completion from high school, not a high school diploma. They're not included in these graduation stats.
I I can appreciate, but anybody that has a classroom, well, a preschool turned into a an adult classroom will pass anything. So I'm sorry. I just think we need more. We need more. We really, really need more. I have visited schools throughout California and our schools. Our adults and transition program is not, I I believe, it's not up to par.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gimlin.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Yeah, I think our final indicator is the suspension rate. So this is our suspension rate last year. So for a student to be included in the suspension rate, they have to be suspended for one day, at least one day. Any student that is suspended for at least one day is included in the suspension rate. So three point eight percent of students were suspended at least one day last year. That was a decline of zero point three percent and gets us right around where we were pre-pandemic levels. That three point eight percent is right around the same level that we were in about twenty twenty nineteen. And again, you have our five by five grid here. That puts us in the medium level, and because we had a decline, which is a positive decline, we went from a yellow to a green. And again, this is where our subgroups fall along those colors. And then finally, we get to county and state comparisons. So as I said, chronic absenteeism still is an area of concern across the county and across the state as well. We would love to see lots of greens and lots of blues across the board here. But you can see where we kind of fall with our neighbors across the county and across the state. Some areas were a little bit higher or a little bit better color. Other areas were a bit, a little bit lower. Again, in the college and career, medium doesn't actually get reported as yellow, but we can all translate that medium level to a yellow. So that's just for the purpose of this presentation, so. And this is what the dashboard looks like when you log into the site. When you click on each of these individual areas, it'll take you down deeper, and you can look at the different subgroups and see exactly what you saw during this presentation. With that, I will answer any questions or any comments you may have.
Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Gimlin? Well, thank you for already answering so many questions along the road, so we appreciate that. Nothing? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Gimlin.
Thank you.
Let's hope we see more improvement next year.
Sure.
Especially on that chronic absenteeism. Yes. Okay, that's item number fifteen. It's just a report only. We're going to move to item number sixteen, which is the approval of the two thousand twenty-three School Accountability Report Cards. They're also known as SARCs. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. As the board will recall, this is the time of year where we review the School Accountability Report Cards, or SARCs. Since nineteen eighty-eight, state laws required all public schools to produce a SARC. The purpose of the SARC is to show parents in the community details about each public school and how the schools are doing on achieving their goals. The public can also use the SARC to compare schools to schools, and they are publicly available on our website, or they will be upon your approval tonight. So the SARC covers demographic data, a variety of different climate information, some academic data, which we review tonight, among other things. Principals write a little introduction and update various parts of it from year to year. So upon your approval tonight, we will then, as I said, be placing them on the website. We submit them to the state as well, which is a required part of our process, which is due on February. So that's why we brought it for you tonight. With that, I'm happy to tape any comments or questions you may have.
Okay, so we got our notebook.
We did.
And unfortunately, the SARCs have now become something that's very uniform. And thank goodness, we do have the principal's comments at the beginning. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Ms. Dixon on the School Accountability Report Cards?
I don't have.
Okay, questions only right now. We'll have comments later. Do you see any changes coming up that regarding legislation that asked in changes?
To the SARC, you mean? I haven't seen anything coming through yet. It's been pretty standard for all the time that I've been involved, either as a principal or in the job that I do now. So we'll see. I mean, we'll, we have to follow the format that's provided by the state, so that's why they all look pretty much exactly the same. It would be interesting to get some other details there. The School Plan for Student Achievement, which we see later in the year, the SIPSA, provides additional in-depth details that are brought before our school site councils and then brought for approval here to the board. So those, I think, are, although a lengthier read, a more interesting and revealing read, but the SARC is a pretty standard document coming out of the state, and I haven't seen any legislation showing any changes on that yet.
I would agree with you that the school plans are more reflective of the culture of the school compared to the, this feels more like a required document so people can at least see things side by side, be able to compare easily, whether it's test scores or diversity, those kind of. Any other questions? This is report only, but if anyone from the community would like, oh, it is for approval. If anyone from the community would like to comment on this item, number sixteen, you're welcome to do so. Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close it off with a public comment and bring it back to the board for comments. Ms. Mager, you said you had a comment?
Well, I ended up just reading the principal's descriptions because everything else is the same. That and the CASP scores. Focus on that. And Judkins stood out. Judkins always stands out. Mr. Pittman doesn't. They all do a good job, but it's, at Judkins, we relate, retry, rework, and are dedicated to modeling consistency. It was just a different twist. Appreciate that. The other thing is I went through the CASP, comparing their scores with our district average. And we are working on math, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because that is just like, it's in the face, and it's, then you wonder at high school, are they really not taking it seriously? Some of them are, and you can tell which students that particular test, and it is only one test. But when you get them all compiled together, it's like.
If I could offer one quick comment on that, tomorrow, we have our principals and cabinet meeting, and the first item of business is how we are preparing students for CASP, sharing ideas across our nineteen schools on what that looks like. As you say, it is one test, but it is one important measure of how students are reaching proficiency on the state standards. And that should be normed against all the other things that we do to help kids be proficient on state standards. So we have a fine group of principals with wonderful ideas. We'll be sharing them tomorrow to hopefully see, continue to see some improvement there.
Ms. Ken Dell, do you have comments?
Yeah, I, you know, I was kind of looking at the data just as a former math teacher. By kind, it's dominated by gender, and so like, is there some point where where girls are doing, achieving in math? And so that data was a little bit all over the place. But the other thing I noticed, it was kind of, I don't know if it's significant, but it's really interesting, is that fifteen of our schools have more males than females. Only four schools have more female, and some of them are really skewed. Like Fair Grove is forty percent female and sixty percent male. So I just thought that was interesting. Like, where are our girls?
They're in college.
Good question.
Yeah, are we missing some girls in this room?
Anyway, that's interesting. I did notice the boys in a couple of the, even the high school, when I was looking at the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, New Tech is, is, you know, a big difference, like thirty-five percent female and sixteen.
But that's to be expected because of the the technology bed that people perceive with New Tech.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Just like Cal Poly has more males than females, which is unusual for a liberal arts school, but it's those ag engineering business majors that attract males more.
Although I graduated from Cal Poly in math in two thousand and one, and it was the first year there were more females, both undergrad and grad, getting math degrees than males, and I think it's it's continued since then.
Ms. Van? Can you tell me if we need to do our PLC for math? Are we defining what is required so that we're all consistent? Because math builds on top of each other, and if you don't get and master it from the very beginning, you fall behind. So you've got to memorize the multiplication table, additions, whatever it is, so.
Yes, that is exactly the plan with professional learning communities to identify what those priority standards are, make sure that students master them before they move on to the next grade level, whether that's the next grade level in elementary school, and then they stay there, or they're moving up to middle or high school. We look both at horizontal alignment, meaning that the three of us all teach fourth grade together, and we are all teaching the same priority standards, and vertical alignment, meaning we are at an elementary school, you are at a middle school, and we are preparing them in the same way each elementary school is doing that for middle and so on. So that work is critical to help make sure that we spend time in the places that it matters most and make sure students master what they need to know, as you say, in order to really have a strong handle on the basics. So as mathematics becomes more complicated, they are ready to meet that challenge.
Have we moved all major schools to be cohesive?
We are on the road to doing that. In order to do that well, we need to make sure that all teachers participate because it doesn't go great when we're just like, here it is, and you're going to do it. We need to kind of build that professional learning together. So by doing that as a community, we will have more success. So that's one of the big things we're working on this year.
It's also one of the reasons we chose to go with a math adoption pilot math textbooks in the current year so that we can get on track in doing that and identifying those essential standards. And then the gaps within those within that curriculum that we adopt.
Ms. Name, even you?
Thank you. So does that include also individuals with intellectual development disability? Because that's very important.
When we look at our math adoption, we absolutely look for differentiation opportunities within the adoption itself to make sure that for English learners and students with disabilities and other things like that, that there are tools and accessibility options within it, if that is your question.
Yes, and will we, as a board, be receiving that once you get that?
Yes, so we are in the pilot process right now, and we have not yet concluded that process. But upon our pilot committees making a selection, then we will bring it to you for two reports. First, a regular report, then we put it on public review for any board member or the public to examine and offer comment, and then we bring it back to you for approval.
And another, another concern that parents are also bringing is, will our students graduate with other students of their schools? Are we still separating them, having their own graduation at the fires fireside? So it's something that has been brought up many, for many, many, many years now. I'm bringing it to you. You know, they feel that it is important that their students are graduating with their peers. This is inclusionary opportunities for everyone. So I just, it's a conversation that you guys can have. I think that this is monies we could save in one part. Second, we can also make sure that our kids are welcomed in the community. Well, this is a welcoming community. So our kids have value.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. The one thing I'll say about the tests, the CASP test, especially at high school, it's really hard to get kids excited about it, and they really don't feel any. I mean, there was a day when my kids went to high school that the state actually gave you a thousand bucks for college if you did well. So there's no real strings to it, and this is the stick I give my students. I always say, you should always try your best at any test you have. You never know when you don't get into the college that you want to, and you have to pull everything out of your wallet. And one of them might be your CASP scores. It might be your SAT. It might be your ACT. It might be some other proof or award. So you want to stuff that wallet full of really good things about yourself, and so you should try your hardest on the CASP test so you could pull that out if you need to. Just saying. You could share my story with.
Excellent advice, Mrs. Martin. Thank you.
Because, like I said, every interaction, the interview, and every test or every kind of assessment is something you might be able to use on appeal to get into that college of yours. You never know. Anyways, okay, I do need approval of the two thousand twenty-three.
I approve of twenty twenty-three School Accountability Report Card.
I second. Is the move by trustee Mager, second by trustee Ken Dell? Roll call, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Amy Bernier?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, we move on to items scheduled for discussion and possible action. Item number seventeen, approval. Initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District to the CMR Unified Teachers Association for two thousand twenty-three twenty-four negotiations. Dr. Handy?
Thank you, President Martin. This is the fourth month. You've essentially read the same memo, and unless guided otherwise, I'll do a summary for tonight and consecutive four months. The employer-employer relations in California require that both parties sunshine their proposals for the public to have an opportunity to comment, and this is a two-step process. So this item is the initial bargaining position of the CMR Unified School District that was last presented to the governing board at our last meeting on December twelfth. No comments from the public were made on that item at that session. And this memo serves as the second reading in that two-step process for public comment, excuse me. It is accompanied by the district's proposal for collective bargaining, and it is recommended at this time that the board accept the proposal as presented.
Any questions from the board on this item? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone in the public would like to comment on this item, item number seventeen, the initial proposal. Seeing no comments in the public, I'm going to bring it back to the board for any comments.
Yes, salaries. Can you? Can you elaborate on the salaries, please?
I would elaborate that the district is committed to our students and staff as is outlined there, and that our desire is to invest and to be transparent, and that we seek to review salaries with the labor partners in negotiations.
And do our labor partners agree or disagree?
That's what the negotiation process is for, is for us to outline our proposal in more detail. It's a negotiation and an opportunity for us to collaborate on how to move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I accept a motion on item number seventeen because I do need approval.
I approve.
I approve. I move approval of the initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District to the CMR Unified Teachers Association for 2023-2024 negotiations.
Okay. Motion by Kandel, seconded by trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please. Kandel?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. Tom? Yes. Naomi Bernier? Yes. Martin? Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number 18, approval, adoption of Resolution A 2324-13, removing committed funds for staffing stabilization. Mr. Eichberger, are you a doctor yet? You're working on it.
Still working diligently on it. Six months on my coursework to go.
Okay.
Not that I'm counting at all.
Okay, Mr. Eichberger.
So this evening before you, you have Resolution A 2324-13. And if you recall, back in June, the board committed $7,191,624 towards staffing stabilization. This was due to the 10% reserve trigger as part of Senate Bill 751. And ultimately, it had to do with us making sure that we are staying under the required 10% reserve at budget adoption and making sure that we are also remaining fiscally prudent. If we go back to that time in June, there was a ton of uncertainty. We didn't know what the COLA for the current year was going to be. There was discussion about changes, and the board was fiscally prudent, making sure we set that money aside for staff stabilization. And here we are today. The out-year COLAs are changing to the tune of 8.27 million in terms of revenue or anticipated revenue to the district. And there is still fiscal uncertainty as it relates to the state budget. The removing of those committed funds, what that will do is it will allow the district to then use those funds towards other purposes to help stabilize our budget and would then become part of the ending fund balance or reserve for economic uncertainty that will be coming to you as part of the second interim budget report anticipated in March.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Eichberger? What type of funds? What are we looking at? And what are we talking?
So ultimately, what this will do is currently, the board set that money aside and said, this can only be used for staff stabilization. So what that meant was anything that had to do with preserving staff. It could be related to extending the number of intervention teachers. It could have to do with combo reductions. It could have to do with just general staffing, meaning being able to pay for the number of teachers we have. By releasing that commitment, what it will do is it will just move that money down into the general operating budget for the district.
So I am aware funds went for ESL $13 million, and that was separated. Then you have funds for special education that's separated. Then you have general funds that's separated. So what part are we looking at? Are we looking at it in home? Are we looking at it just general?
Excellent question. It will actually go just to the general fund. And when we think about those other funds, I'll use special education as an example. The money that we get from the federal government is typically less than what the district uses or spends in terms of expenditures. So when those funds run short, the district general fund contributes to those. In the past, it was a really bad word. They called it encroachment. Now it's a general fund contribution to those specialized programs. And this would be available for those purposes as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Does anyone else have questions regarding the resolution? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to comment on item number 18, removing committed funds for staffing stabilization. Seeing no one, I'm going to close it to public comment and bring it back to the board for any comments. Seeing no comments, I'm going to plead for approval. For approval? I move for approval on item number 18, approval for adoption of Resolution A 2324-13, removing committed funds for staffing stabilization. Great. Second? It's been moved by trustee Naomi Bernier, seconded by trustee Mayor, to approve item number 18. Roll call vote, please. Naomi Bernier? Yes. Mayor? Yes. Tom? Yes. Kandel?
Yes. Martin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to number 19, report, first reading, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the California School Employees Association and its CMR Chapter 275 to the CMR Unified School District for 2023 through 2026 successor negotiations. Dr. Handy?
Thank you, President Martin. This is the sunshine of the initial, or the initial bargaining position of CSEA, and it's Chapter 275. You'll notice as part of the memo, they are proposing many articles. Mentioned Article 2 miscellaneous, Article 4 hours of employment, Article 5 wages, Article 6 career ladders, Article 7 holidays, Article 9 leaves, Article 16 safety, Article... I think they meant 17 health and welfare benefits. Article 17, there's a multiple there, duration, and Article 18 layoff and reemployment. So many articles up for consideration with CSEA negotiations. Typically, this is a three-year agreement, and so this is the beginning of the next three-year cycle, which is why there are so many articles being sunshine.
Yeah, it almost looks like we should have just noted the ones that were being opened. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Handy on the report, first reading of the initial proposal with CSEA, our classified employees? So what's the next step?
You can expect to have the second step in the two-step process of CSEA's proposal. The district will then sunshine its proposal. And once all, both parties have had an opportunity to sunshine their proposals, then we will enter into negotiations with CSEA.
Thank you. So hopefully, we'll see those sunshines in the next coming meetings.
Next four months.
Anyone else have questions, number 19? Okay, opening it up to public comment from anyone in the audience. Seeing no hands raising or legs moving, we're going to close the public comment and bring it back to the board for any comments. Seeing none, I urge a motion on the number... Oh, actually, I don't need it. It's a report first reading. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Handy, for that. Okay, item number 20, second reading, revision of board policy, administrative regulations and exhibit. Dr. Fussin?
Thank you, President Martin. This is the second reading of Board Policy 4030, Non-Discrimination in Employment, Exhibit 4112.9 Employee Notifications. There's two subsequent also exhibits related to employee notifications, and then AR 4218, dismissal, suspension and disciplinary action. It's my recommendation, the second review, you make a motion to adopt these policies and exhibits in administrative regulation.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Fussin on the administrative regs? Most of this is just bringing us into 2023 legally. 2024 too?
Yeah, good idea.
No questions? Looking at the audience, does anyone have a comment on this item? Item number 20, it's a second reading. I'll bring it back to the board. It is a second reading, so I am seeking approval on the revision of board policy, administrative regulations and exhibits. I move to adopt item number 20, second reading, revision of board policy, administration, regulations and exhibits. Second? It's been moved by trustee Naomi Bernier, seconded by trustee Kandel. Roll call vote, please. Naomi Bernier? Yes. Kandel?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. Tom?
Yes. Martin? Yes. Thank you. Passes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 21. Trustee Kandel's our new clerk, so she'll be taking over, making the motions on our student discipline.
I move approval. The Board of Education finds that there is a miscause to expel from all schools in the district student cases number 23-24-020 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C. Number 23-24-021 for violation of Education Code Sections 4890C. Case number 23-24-022 for violation of Education Code Sections 48915A1E and 48900A2 and 48900A1. And case number 23-24-023 for violation of Education Code Sections 48915A1E and 48900A2 and 48900A1. And it is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plans and admission review dates as set forth in the December 11, 2023, January 17, 2024, January 19, 2024, and January 23, 2024, agreements and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second? It's been moved by trustee Kandel, seconded by trustee Mayor. Roll call vote, please. Kandel?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier? Yes. Martin? Yes. Motion passes. Do we have... Is that it? All right. All right. We've come to the part of our meeting where public comment on items not on the agenda. I mentioned it at the beginning of our meeting. For any member of the public can comment on anything under our jurisdiction, but no more than three minutes and no more than 20 minutes per topic. Then I don't have any cards, but if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the podium. Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment on items not on the agenda. And I'm going to adjourn our meeting to our next meeting, February 13th. And thank everyone for helping make our school district wonderful.